I'd like to call to order the council meeting for Tuesday, March tenth. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crater.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to excuse Councilperson Phillips?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Phillips is excused. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there, are there any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The council agenda has been approved. Item number six is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Brian Pelletier of Tale to Table located seventy-three ten Manchester for a beer and wine and Sunday liquor license. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay. If that's the case, then this public hearing is now closed. Item number seven is a public forum to address the mayor and council. Is there anyone that would like to speak? As usual, state your name and the address.
Hi, I'm John Eric Hansen. I live at thirty-five eighteen Oxford. And I'm addressing you all today on my role as president of the board of trustees for the Maplewood Public Library. We, we all sent a letter to Mr. Traxler and Mayor Greenberg two Mondays ago. And so I wanted to follow up on that and enter that into the, into the public record. I think that we have just forwarded this letter on to all the council people as well. So you should have that in your email now. But I'm just going to read from part of that letter here. So the Board of Trustees of the Maplewood Public Library would like to meet formally to discuss the library's lease with the city of Maplewood. We have all agreed the lease is not clear enough about response to financial responsibilities for large repairs. In addition, we feel that the library would benefit from better communication with the city about the various benefits that the library shares with the city. Basically, the last several months, we've had several large repairs that we've had to do to the library, including the HVAC system and the elevator. We've paid for those repairs. However, there's ongoing issues with, with the structure of the building. We have numerous water leaks from the roof and from exterior walls. It's led to water damage and mold damage. We just today had to close down the reading room in the library due to extensive, extensive mold and water damage on the floor. Basically, the, the city owns the building. We are entered, as the library, we're entered into a tenant landlord relationship. So, I mean, I, I was in an apartment in, in Maplewood for four years before I purchased the house in Maplewood. And I, when I was in a tenant landlord relationship, I wasn't expected to make major structural repairs to a building that we didn't own. So we were hoping to be able to talk with everybody about how we can come together and figure out these pressing issues of the library and the, the structure of the building and make sure that we can continue to provide services for the community. I invite everyone to look at the budget for the library, which is posted on the, on the library's website. We run a balanced budget. I did a bunch of quick back-of-the-envelope calculations earlier. Approximately ninety-three percent of our budget is going towards materials, keeping the lights on and wages. So there's not a ton of wiggle room there for large structural repairs to a historic building. And I would also invite everybody here, council and staff, to join us at the library so that we could give you an in-person tour of the damages that we're experiencing there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you, um, did you provide a, a copy of that lease or can we get a copy of that lease review?
I can give, I can get a copy.
Just so we can see the terms.
One critical, one critical point to note, and I know you weren't on the library board. The, the landlord-tenant relationship, this has been an agreement that, I believe it even predated city manager Marty Corcoran. They pay a dollar a year and the city takes care of the shell. It's always been the library takes care of everything else and, and that's where the dollar a year comes in. The library is its own taxing entity. If they need additional revenue, the library can go out and look for additional revenue. But the fact that they're getting the, the building for one dollar a year, if they have to make improvements, that's been the prevailing thought is you're getting rent-free. So therefore, that's the deal the city's giving, which is honestly, it's a good deal. There's no question we want to work together with the library, though. It's part of the community, much like the school district, the businesses. But it's, it is critical to note. The landlord-tenant relationship usually comes with an actual rent and that's where landlords are typically doing work interior. But since we're doing a dollar a year, that's why they've always been, been responsible for anything except the exterior. As far as the, the waterproofing, they did a, the library took over, did a major project probably five years ago, if not longer. We offered help. I even offered, offered a suggestion on what contractor not to use. That was not, we were not, our, our offer was, they didn't take us up on it. And so if there's still problems, we'll continue to work with them. We've sent a tuck pointer over and done other reviews. Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So, and is the, so the lease relationship is described in that lease that you can get?
I need to look at it, but I, I specifically remember, I mean, I've, this has been going on.
Okay.
Every time there's an issue, many years.
Would it be possible to get some samples of other library-city relationships?
Absolutely.
From neighboring municipalities?
And I didn't get the letter. So did you say that?
I didn't either. I didn't get the letter either.
I will scan and email it out to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah. I just got it today.
And I've been out of the office.
You said you sent it.
Barry and I talked about it briefly today. Lease, and then you also want sample of relationships. We can, we can grab that research for you. What we can do is either Barry or myself can contact, John Eric and we can work something out. But I just want to make that clear. It's not as if we're receiving revenue for this and that's why the relationship is what it is.
I think the issue is that the lease is ambiguous and, and very, it.
Sounds like it might be old also.
Yeah.
It's very old.
Is it more than one paragraph? I'm not sure.
Right. So the, the lease was a twenty-year lease agreement that was entered into in two thousand and six. It's expiring in two thousand and twenty-six. This is slightly paraphrasing, but the lease basically says that the city of Maplewood may or may not handle repairs.
In that context, if it's just to give you, if it's a, if it's an interior door that's off-alignment and one of our employees can get over there and fix it at no cost, we will obviously do that. If it's something where the door needs to be replaced, that's when we back off. So we do send people over there periodically to try to limit their cost as best as possible. We also do some exterior groundwork. But if it's anything major, the library has always handled that, that cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public forum? Anyone at all? The public forum is now closed. Are there announcements?
There are a few. This Saturday, March fourteenth, there's the Community Paint Day at the Transit Stop at Citizens Park. That should be good. You don't have to be an artist to go. They would like the community's help. There will be an artist there in charge of the project, so it should be a lot of fun. Also, the next day, on Sunday, March fifteenth, the grand opening of the Heights. And they're going to, I think they're open all day, but the ribbon cutting is at two o'clock. And their renovations now is supposed to be all done. So that ought to be real exciting, too, to see after all these months. And an update on the Coffee Crawl, that's Saturday, the twenty-first. The morning session is all sold out. The tickets are fifteen dollars, but the only thing that's left is the afternoon session between one and five. So there's still time to get your tickets.
So the, the final town hall from MRH for the Prop E for Educational Excellence and Equity is going to be on Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, from seven to eight-thirty PM. That's in the Early Childhood Center Gym. And I believe that there is childcare available if you pre-arrange it.
What day did you say?
That's Tuesday, March twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay. Thank you.
At the ECC?
At the ECC, yeah. So, so we'll be here, but hopefully lots of people will go to that. They're really informative.
Are there any other announcements? Okay. Next item is the approval of the February twenty-fifth city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The February twenty-fifth meeting minutes have been approved. Anthony, would you like to start with number ten?
Motion to approve a beer and wine and Sunday liquor license for Brian Pelletier of Tale of Table located at seventy-three ten Manchester Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. In the discussion, Brian is here tonight, so if you have any questions for him, he can answer them for you. So, uh, are you going to have a, how are you going to dispense, you know, the, the beer and wine?
This is, uh, to serve beer and wine by the glass. So we put it in glasses. The, um, the Tale to Table is the story of food. One of the big things that we're going to have there are cooking classes. And we'd like the opportunity to serve beer and wine to the people that are taking the classes.
Will you sell beer and wine in, in addition to other food products?
Right. We do have other food products that we have. Just the occasional things. We have regular grilled cheese sandwiches on Friday. We're also planning to expand that menu with sandwiches and meats, baked goods, other small items. We're not going to be a full-service restaurant and the plan is not to be a bar or a pub.
Are there any other questions?
Are you going to sell like a six-pack of beer or no?
No.
You're just going to dispense it?
This is retail, by the way.
Okay.
So what pairs well with grilled cheese?
It's about everything.
No other questions? Okay.
You can ask my son in there. He's, he's a connoisseur of grilled cheese.
In that case, we need a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number eleven.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Gotham Gatla to fill a vacancy on the Special Business District Tax Advisory Commission and establishing his term of office is expiring June thirty, twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any?
Updates going on here? It could be hours.
Oh.
Sorry.
I'll take my time then. Are there any comments or questions about the nomination? Everyone's received the, his resume, so. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crater.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Resolution two, twenty-eleven is approved.
Item number twelve, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a conditional construction and use agreement with Citizens National Bank of Greater St. Louis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? A roll call, please.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Crater.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-dash-twelve is approved.
Item number thirteen, please.
Bill fifty-nine thirty-two, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Road Relinquish Agreement for Manchester Road between Big Ben Boulevard West to Bartold Avenue, a distance of zero-point-four-one miles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you give us a brief synopsis of the?
Yes. For many, many years, the city of Maplewood has requested control of this portion of Manchester. And we were always told no. And over the last year or two, they've agreed and we finally got this taken care of. We actually end up maintaining it for all practical purposes anyway. We end up putting salt down because people have actually a little bit of trouble coming up right in front of the Volvo dealership. There's actually a slight incline there. We would get complaints that that's the only part that wasn't plowed, so we just dropped the plow and did it anyway. It gives us the ability for development to have the control. And again, if we ever do need to maintain it or resurface it, it's a major collector, so we can get eighty-twenty match. So it just makes sense to do this. We, we previously passed a resolution and MoDOT came back and said we'd like to have this in ordinance form. So once this is done, I'll go ahead and sign this agreement and then we'll take ownership of Manchester essentially through the entire city of Maplewood, because we currently own it from Martini East to the city of St. Louis. This way we'll have complete control of Manchester through Maplewood.
Thank you.
Yeah, and originally we were, we went to get it all the way to Hanley. But MoDOT would not allow us because of by state or because of the trans-metro.
The Bartold.
That's why it stops at Bartold?
Bartold, I'm sorry.
I thought it said we don't take over until some work is completed. Is that true?
Yeah. Thank you, Jenny. Or Councilmember Schmidt, I apologize. They're going to do a complete resurface of it and it's starting all the way, I believe, from Kirkwood. Isn't that correct, Mr.? So it's starting from Kirkwood, coming in all the way. Once that's done, then we take it over, but, um, uh.
Have they estimated when that will be?
Supposed to be the summer.
Oh, this summer?
Yeah. And so, um, years back when we did Manchester, that was our phase two and three of the project. We did all the sidewalk improvements already, so in, in, in other cities, there's going to be some much more major work. In Maplewood, there's essentially just a resurfacing. We'll get this inlet in front of City Hall. If anyone's driven on it, you drop down.
The million-dollar sinkhole?
Yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that taken care of. And we have one ADA ramp that we're also going to try to get fixed because it puddles, it ponds. But other than that, it's just going to be a resurfacing and then we'll have ownership.
So once we have ownership, I know there was an issue raised with the school board about the, um, making a school zone out there. Would we be able to control that then?
Yes, it gives us a lot more control on, on issues like, on all issues related. We don't have to go to MoDOT. It's one of the principal reasons we want to take ownership of this.
Great.
So we'll, we'll own it to Bartold and then the state will own it from Bartold to Hanley? And then from Hanley on, it'd be Brentwood?
Yeah. Anytime you get near that intersection anyway, you still have to go through the county who owns Hanley anyway, so.
Okay.
Our ability to control.
Yeah, they own Big Ben, Manchester, too.
Well, that's, I knew the county had Hanley. I guess I'm trying to figure out when there's a foot of snow. The state's not actually going to come and plow that block.
We still go through. And, and the county does a pretty good job plowing. It's the state that, that we have concerns with.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, please.
Bill fifty-nine thirty-two, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Road Relinquish Agreement, pardon me, Relinquishment Agreement for Manchester Road between Big Ben Boulevard West to Bartold Avenue, a distance of zero-point-four-one miles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number fourteen is a presentation for Sunn and Station Apartments. Sunn and Station Phase Two. I'm not sure if you're going to have the visual aids here.
You guys have the hard copies?
Yeah.
Yes.
I've got extra hard copies if needed. Thanks for allowing us to present tonight. My name's G.T. Cozad with Cozad Commercial Real Estate. We represent Sunn and, all of Sunn's real estate holdings. So I also have Matt Crater and Rick Kalus, who are Sunn family members here. Mark Murray from Armstrong Teasdale, and then my brother Michael Cozad, too, also from Cozad Commercial Real Estate. And they can help answer questions if needed. So I, um, I put together this presentation, which looks like we have an update to go. But I started with a, just a overall Google Maps for those who didn't know how much Sunn has developed over the years. So Sunn has their plant at Hanley and Manchester on approximately eighteen acres. It's been there over ninety years. And then they have the building across the street, what we call the Hanley Complex, the old Couples Building. It's approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand square feet. Lots of tenants in there, U.S. Bank. We just put Host Holdings in there and Caleres. They just took over at the space that Enterprise moved out of recently. And then they have the Sunn Business Park, which is to the south of their plant. It's around four-hundred thousand square feet as well. So in between all of that is the redevelopment area that they've been working on now for a number of years. We started, me and I think, back in two thousand and eight with the project, acquiring the remaining homes that were there. But most recently, we completed phase one of the apartments. Phase one is a hundred-and-seventy-four units. And it was sixty-six percent one-bedrooms and studios. It was only fifteen studios. And then thirty-three percent two-bedrooms. It's ninety-eight percent leased. I think we have three two-bedrooms vacant right now. Other than that, it's, has stayed full now for a while. Great amenities. We have a dog washing station inside. We have pool, fitness center, bocce. It's a, it's a young, professional crowd, is, I'd say, the, the, the average demographic that's, that's there. So it's been a successful project. We, and you guys in your packet have just some pictures of common areas, some of the rooms, kitchen, the courtyard area. All that is within your packet. So we've been working on plans to potentially do a phase two. The phase two is just to the north of phase one. It looks very similar, other than instead of three wings, it has two wings on, on the design. It's four stories. It actually has one deck of parking in the back. On the plan, the, the first phase was all surface parking. But it has a lot of similar amenities, large courtyard area, pool, its own fitness center. We're looking into a dog park back by the, by where the deck is for the tenants. Both of these properties are gated and are accessible by key fob to get into the complex. Not only to get in the parking, but actually get in the complex and to get any of, any of the hallways. So that project, you could see where it sits on the plan. We have six-point-six acres left to develop. This would be on almost exactly half. It's like three-point-three-one acres is what it would sit on. It's a hundred, it's planned to be a hundred-and-twenty-one units. It, the, like I had said earlier about the different percentages of one-bedroom versus two-bedroom, this one is planned to be over eighty percent one-bedrooms, one-bedrooms and studios. And then, you know, less than twenty percent two-bedrooms, just because of the demand. It's, we've, we've had the most trouble filling the two-bedrooms and the studios went faster than anything and the one-bedrooms were right after that. But everything else would be very similar with regards to the design of phase one, if any of you have, if any of you have seen that. So in the plan, I mean, you can see the civil site plan. You can see the different floor plans. The parking decks in there, obviously. And then some of the materials that we hope to use. We are, we've submitted this to the design review board. I think we're on the schedule to have the architect present on the twelfth, on Thursday. So that's been submitted to the design review board. But all, the materials are very similar, mostly brick. And you can see the rest in the packet. So we, in this, in this whole redevelopment area, we have a redevelopment agreement with the city. We have a PUD and we have a redevelopment agreement with the city. And, and so part of that redevelopment agreement allows us to have tax abatement. The tax abatement is, is capped at, it's a hundred percent tax abatement for ten years and fifty percent tax abatement for five years. And then it drops off. So in your packet, we, we showed financials, current financials and projections going forward on phase one. So we showed, showed the, how the property is doing, how phase one is doing with abatement and what, how it would have been doing if we didn't have the abatement. So, and these, these numbers are audited and we have to provide these audited numbers to HUD because this is a HUD finance loan. So the, the internal rate of return that we would have, that we have with tax abatement is at six-point-two percent. Six-point-two-nine, I can't.
Anthony?
It's nine.
Six-point-two-nine.
Six-point-two-nine.
And the, if we did not have tax abatement, it'd be at point-five-eight percent would be the internal rate return. So it, it's sort of, what we're just trying to do is prove out the numbers and show that it would have been difficult for us to move forward with the project, but for the tax abatement that is in the redevelopment agreement. So then we also put on another spreadsheet, the projections that we would have for phase two. And we're using the rent assumptions that we have for phase one, which we think are good assumptions. And we are, we're using expenses on a pro-rata basis, based upon it being a smaller complex. And, and we're estimating our rates of return at five-point-eight-six with abatement. If we didn't have abatement, we'd be at two-point-one-nine percent. So it's, again, it's a project that if our client doesn't have the abatement, then they likely would not move forward with this type of project. We'd shoot for doing something else on the ground. We then, on the last spreadsheet, we tried to project out, we took everything that calculates in the abatement calculation, because in our redevelopment agreement, the ten years at a hundred percent and the five years at fifty percent, if we take all the abatement we have in that whole redevelopment area and we add it up over time, we have an, if we get to an aggregate total of twelve million dollars worth of abated taxes, then it, that's a cap in the redevelopment agreement. And once we hit that cap, the redevelopment agreement, we've had no more abatement for any project going forward. So we, we are, we, we did this new spreadsheet. We put in phase two, assuming it would be completed in two thousand and twenty-one. And then we, we also assumed development of a phase three that would be similar to phase two, since we have almost the exact amount of acreage left. And we assume that Porsche, who owns the land between them and Maserati, Indigo Group, that they would develop on that lot, because I think they're required to by a recent amendment with the city. I think they have to have it done within three years. And we're trying to calculate when we will hit that cap that's currently in our redevelopment agreement. So just so everyone knows, assuming you're aware, we're paying already a decent amount of taxes on the property now. I think I added up that we're paying about two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand and change in taxes in two thousand and nineteen, based upon what's there now. So that, that amount's obviously not abated. That's the, that's the base taxes that we're paying on, on, on those properties within the redevelopment agreement. So we're only talking about the amount that's over and above that amount that's abated. So when you, if you, if you follow the spreadsheet and you look at the running total, we think we're going to hit our cap somewhere in two thousand, between two thousand and thirty and two thousand and thirty-one. The issue that our client has with that is that if we hit it then, we won't get full tax abatement on the phase two project or the phase three project. We would likely run out of tax abatement somewhere around year eleven in phase two. And if we do phase three, as per the projections, we'd run out somewhere in year nine. And so what we're hoping to do is ask for the council to work with us to amend our redevelopment agreement to eliminate the current cap of the twelve million dollars that's in there. We're not asking for the city to change our ten years at a hundred percent or five years at fifty on any of the projects in. We're not asking for the city to change our ten years at a hundred percent or five years at fifty on any of the projects individually. But as, in aggregate and total, we're asking for the cap to be eliminated. So Phase One, when it ends, when the fifteen years hits and our tax abatement ends, then that's fine. That project is done with tax abatement. But we'd like to have Phase Two and Phase Three have the same benefit that Phase One has, and get the ten years at a hundred percent and five years at fifty percent. And so we projected those going out fifteen years on this spreadsheet. And just in full transparency, we presented the same information to the school board two and a half weeks ago, just because they obviously are, I'd say, the most impacted by the taxes. I think they get sixty point seven percent of the taxes. So our presentation to them was showing them our potential development, the taxes that they were getting now, based upon what we have developed. And then the amount they would get if we fully developed versus not developing those particular lots, trying to show the delta in between. Hoping that they would agree with us that the more that we develop in Maplewood, that our client develops in Maplewood, the more that we develop, the more taxes down the road for everyone is sort of the goal that we talked to them about. And our redevelopment agreement, it's a lot of legal language, so that's why I have Mark Murray here. He's got the agreement. I think he would be someone that would be able to comment upon what would actually need to be changed in the redevelopment agreement. But other than that, that's what we're hoping for and open questions.
The current tax abatement that was negotiated for the development, when does that expire?
So it is ten years at a hundred percent, five years at fifty percent. It's got that already in there for each project. And I think that it wasn't that it expired, it's that we had to develop certain lots by certain dates. And I think that we have to, I think that our last lot, Lot E, has to be started by like two thousand twenty-three, but I'd have to confirm. So right now, wouldn't it be, that wouldn't it be at risk as far as the expiration date?
Anthony? Could we go to the last slide?
Last slide, yeah.
I had quite a few questions about the numbers that you provided. You said they're audited. Does that mean a third-party accounting firm prepared them?
Clifton Larson Allen.
Okay. You have in here a vacancy reserve, but it's not a reserve. Are you taking out a percentage for a vacancy rate?
On Phase Two?
On both?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not an actual reserve. So it looks like it's at eleven percent is what you're predicting. That's on Phase One.
Yeah, so that would be on average.
But going forward, but you're ninety-eight percent leased, so theoretically you have some additional cash flow through that. Is that set by HUD? Okay. 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 Do your operating reserves include any sort of development fee paid to the developer? I mean, your operating expenses?
Operating expenses, do not, that's not.
Is there a developer fee?
No.
No. Is, who?
There's a management fee paid to a third-party manager, which is a gray star. And they're out of Chicago and Denver.
But there's no related party fee paid out of that? Okay. What, so I was a little confused why it stopped at year eleven, because on Phase One, on your analysis, because it looks like you can make it to two thousand thirty. And then the last year, year eleven, it has sort of the full abatement, but it looks like that should be half that, because wouldn't that be when fifty percent starts?
Tell me which one you're on.
So I'm on year eleven on Phase One. It says four eighteen.
In the Phase One worksheet.
Yeah, on page, it's three, page three of the PDF that we got.
They just did an internal rate of return based upon it ending. They have to, they set a sale date to get an internal rate of return calculation.
Yeah, I'm just curious why they said it so early. I mean, most, I review a lot of projections for my job, and they usually go out. I mean, I'm surprised they didn't go out the full fifteen years of the.
We could do that. I think it actually wouldn't change that much, but we could provide that change.
Well, I just, I think that number's wrong. And then I was curious, it looked like it would be, because then it said for the rest of the years, they only added seven hundred thousand, but it looks like, it looks like year eleven should be half that amount, and then eight hundred and forty or so would be added to the sale price. So it looks like the numbers are a little bit off there.
I'm happy to give any comments to the accounting firm. We didn't touch this spreadsheet.
Sure. And then on Phase Two, I guess I was looking at, how, you know how they calculated their projected abatement amounts? Because it looks like, you know, your rents are about only a third less, and you said the project's about a third the size, but your abatement you're projecting is half, less than half.
Because the county, the county surprised us and just reassessed our land at a commercial, at a commercial rate, our base taxes right now. So they just jumped from twenty thousand to a hundred and seventeen thousand or something. So the abatement is less on Phase Two, because our base taxes are so much higher right now. So they just changed our, they just changed our land value to like, I think it was a couple bucks a square foot, and they just changed it to like twelve or thirteen dollars a square foot.
Okay, so then when it's reassessed after you build it, it's gonna be, there's a, there's a less of a gap.
Less of a gap, right.
Between the two? Okay.
Yeah, that surprised us too.
And that looked like the numbers were, I guess you only added, I was confused too, because like on this, did you stop because that's when you predict it's gonna stop on Phase Two? Like you only added in, they only added in, they only added in for not the whole, like when they did the sales price calculation in footnote four, it looks like they didn't go out the full fifteen years. So I didn't, I didn't understand. It seemed like there was a discrepancy. Sometimes they were including the whole period, sometimes they weren't. So it's sort of hard to get a.
Yeah, I'll send, I can have them send, what they've done in the past is they can send like a one-pager on each of their, and get the details of their, and I'll, of their, of what numbers they used. And I'm happy to have them do that.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
I had a question on the schools' calculation. So that's the next slide. And Anthony, can you flip the slide ahead? So, so at the bottom, there's the, or there's the taxes that go to the school district if developed, and the taxes that go to the school district if two-thirds is not developed.
If Phase Two and Phase Three are not developed.
And those are the totals after twenty thirty-eight, and the total after twenty forty-eight? Is that right?
Yeah, so I, so I ended, so I just, the totals that are in there are just a sum into two thousand thirty-eight. And then to get to the forty-eight line, I just took the number that's in two thousand thirty-eight and times it by ten more years and added it. To get to, you know what I mean, ten more years to get to forty-eight. So I took that, like for example, on school district if developed, that eight hundred eighty-four thousand three eighty-five that are the taxes that would go to them in two thousand thirty-eight annually in that year. I took that number times ten and added it to the six million four thirty-five four sixty-two total in thirty-eight, to get to fifteen two seventy-nine three oh eight, as a cumulative total in two thousand forty-eight. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, when I added the numbers, I got a different total.
What'd you get to?
I got to seven million seven hundred and forty.
On which?
For the schools if developed, and I got to six million six sixty-five on schools if not developed. And so the difference was still one thousand, or one million seventy-four thousand. But I was, since those, I couldn't follow how the mismatch in the adding, I wasn't sure if, about the numbers for the twenty forty-eight.
I can have the accounting firm check the formulas. We thought it was around a million dollar difference, when it's been that way, and then I knew it. It was obviously significantly different, you know, once you take two thousand thirty-eight's number on a go-forward basis. But we can have them double-check the numbers.
So you're really not adding the two thousand thirty-eight number to the total afterwards? You're adding the cumulative number from everything before two thousand thirty-eight, it looks like, to get to that fifteen million number?
I'm using eight eighty-four three eighty-five, which is that two thousand thirty-eight annual number, times ten, and adding that to the six four thirty-five four sixty-two. That was the total.
Okay.
Two thousand forty-eight number.
As far as Phase Two, or Phase Three in Porsche, were you anticipating that the clock would start running on their tax abatement later or at the same time as Phase Two?
We would anticipate that it would start when we're fully finished with construction, like Phase Two.
So that's in twenty twenty-two?
That's, I think we have it in twenty-three for Phase Three estimated, and I think we have it twenty-two for the Porsche.
Yeah.
Because that's, and that's, I think that's part of an agreement they just made with the city. Because I think they're doing a surface lot and something else right now. They have to have a building up within a certain amount of time, by sometime in two thousand twenty-two.
So to clarify, because I'm a little confused, so the fifteen million, or the twelve million dollar cap applies to all those things you have listed in there?
The entire redevelopment area.
And you're saying, don't get rid of, like, so the cap then only applies to the others? So then?
So the cap applies to Sunn and.
I mean, under your proposal, though, you wanna, I mean, you essentially want to get rid of the cap for your, applying to your projects. Because you want us to give you ten years and five years, regardless of what that cap is, right?
Right, so the, but the projects are all of Sunn's projects with regards to the payment.
Okay, so then those other projects would no longer be subject, I mean, they wouldn't, the cap then is pointless. There was, it's as if we are undoing the cap, right? Because then nothing's subject to that cap, so they should get their full abatement too, the other projects, right?
They already are. They're gonna be, in here, they're gonna get there.
They're done.
Ten years and five years.
Well, okay, a couple of them are close, but all right. So they're already getting theirs.
So the Phase One you have running out in, and Porsche and the Maserati run out in twenty thirty-two, which is one year after the twelve million dollar cap runs out.
Yeah. That's when they hit their fifteen-year mark.
So in talking total numbers, so it's about, if you, if you, if we did your proposal, it's about five million for the first phase, it looks like, based on your numbers. Because you're already, what you have there is about four something, and then you gotta add in a million for the other five years. And then it's about two million or so for the second phase. And so assuming the third phase is the same as the second, it'd be somewhere around there too. So it'd be a total of about nine million. A fair?
For the remaining projects?
Say that again, I'm not sure I thought.
Well, so if you're getting five million in tax abatement for Phase One, Phase Two, under your request, would equal about two million, it looks like, under your numbers?
Okay, you're adding up, you're just adding up the abated amounts.
I mean, I went across the line on here unless I'm, and then assuming Phase Three is the same as Phase Two, right? It's about the same, so you'd be about two million for that, unless taxes go up again.
Which we do have, I did a one and a half percent increase per year, starting, I think, in two thousand twenty-one anyway, so I have the taxes going up.
Right, no, but if you're, if you're, if when you start Phase Three, the same thing happens as happened to you before Phase Two, it could potentially be a little lower.
Right.
Can I, so the, on the, this worksheet, the schools comparison one, if you look at the Sunn in Phase One row, are those amounts supposed to match the real estate tax abatement amounts on the Phase One spreadsheet that's to previous?
So they, that spreadsheet. Because they have three fifty on there, is that what you're saying?
Well, so it runs from three fifty up to four eighteen, two eighty-two on the first spreadsheet, but then on the second spreadsheet, it runs, it's like a different set of numbers?
So we're, on this, on this spreadsheet, on the long spreadsheet, we used the taxes that we're paying to the county on, that we actually have to pay. It's like, I think it's twenty-one thousand or something like that for the parcels on Phase One. And then if you go, if you go on the county's website right now, there's not a good way to calculate it, because it just has abated. So you have to go to a previous card, so you have to pull up like a two thousand eighteen card, like a reassessment card. They valued, they valued the land at, or the project at, I think, like twenty-one six. Anyone can pull up, it's like twenty-one six. So we multiplied it by the tax rate times the residential code, and came up with the, this abated amount that we think is accurate, that we'd have to present, because we actually are gonna have to present this to the city to show how much, I think we have to provide financials to the city to show how much is abated. And so we took that off our understanding of what the counties valued our taxes at. And then the Clifton Larson Allen is putting in the full amount. So from my understanding is, they took the base amount and added to the abated amount and have it all in their Phase One spreadsheet.
So. So the Phase One spreadsheet is produced by a different person than produced the Phase Two in the schools' estimation?
Phase One, no, Phase One and Phase Two were done by Clifton Larson Allen. And we used their numbers to do the, read the last page to try to calculate when we thought the abatement would run out. And we had Clifton Larson Allen look at that with us, but the first two were done solely by Clifton Larson Allen.
What you're saying is the numbers don't match.
Yeah, I'm saying, so I'm confused, because the numbers don't match from your spreadsheet to their spreadsheets.
Your spreadsheet is lower than theirs.
Okay, I'll have Clifton Larson Allen check. See, I mean, my guess is it's probably something they're doing from the HUD standards that I'm not aware of, or don't have enough knowledge of, so I'll verify and confirm.
Okay.
Do you currently have any families, I think we had some data that perhaps there's three students that are living at the current Phase One? Do you guys know that go to M R H?
That's what the school district said, that there was three. I think one moved out, so I think it might be down to two, but that's the data they had had too.
And given that you're moving mostly to one bedrooms, it seems unlikely there'll be.
More, yeah. Yeah, I have the demographics, they just, the management company pretty much have the demographics, and it's a pretty young, single crowd.
I'd like to ask a non-abatement question if I can. Because I know we're mainly here to talk about the abatement, but just from a different perspective, I love the apartments that have been built. I love the idea of the, it's the first big development apartment-wise in Maplewood for a long time. Maplewood really lacks accessible units. I know, I just moved my mother-in-law here from out of town, and she wanted to live in Maplewood close to her grandkids, but there's just not much here for her. The problem lies in it's out of reach for most of the people that could most use the amenities that are there. So I'm just curious if there's been any thought of any ability to provide a lower, lower rate for, you know, those that, those that could benefit from the amenities that are there, but simply the price threshold is out of the reach, you know?
So what is our, you know, our range right now? Is it five hundred to two thousand? Nine fifty to twenty. So it ranges from studios that go in one bedroom that are nine fifty up to two bedrooms are twenty-one hundred. And I think we have like, right now in Phase One, I feel like we have, I don't know, fourteen or sixteen different floor plans. And Phase Two's gonna have a number of different plans as well, but I don't think there's, I don't think there's a plan right now to have lower rent, you know, than what we currently have.
Okay.
Is there, I can't tell, looking at the floor plans, are any of these units designed for accessibility and compliant with ADA requirements?
Yeah, I think, and we did this on Phase One too. Do you remember how many we had on Phase One? Fourteen, hardly, fourteen, because it was. Yeah, I think we had fourteen in Phase One. I think we have slightly less on Phase Two, but there are a number planned. I think the HUD requirement is more than the county's requirement as far as number of ADA. I think the HUD requirement is more than the county's requirement as far as the number of ADA. Uh, this is written, uh, looking to do another HUD loan, then we would be required to do that. That's in the plan.
And phase three is, that's developed by Porsche separately, is that right?
No, so, so phase three, the way it's on there, phase three is, is us, our vision to do phase two over again, another phase two next to this, next to this. So, uh, you know, Porsche's, Porsche's developing that lot in between them and Maserati that's separate from us.
Okay, um, and can you say more about, you said that, um, I think in the third worksheet with the school if developed, school if two-thirds not developed, um, you said that the client, which is?
Sunning.
Sunning, um, might do something else?
Yeah, what's that?
Yeah, so I think, um, well, so in general, I think, I, I make the statement that their goal is to be in Maplewood long-term and, and diversify, which is kinda what they've done. They've got office, industrial, now apartments. And, uh, their goal is to continue to do, to develop in Maplewood, to do development. I think they would have the opportunity to, you know, for example, this is not what they wanna do, but they could pave a lot and lease parking to Porsche who needs it, they want it every day. Or to Auto House or to Maserati, uh, or to the dean team who's, or who's, you know, and, um, and so they could do that. And if they did that, then it obviously wouldn't get assessed at a very high rate. And, uh, and all the current projects, we could just kinda let run and get the, um, the, the full ten years and at a hundred percent, five years at fifty percent abatement and just not, not develop a lot. I just didn't, um, that wouldn't be their desire, but they, they could do that, they could try to do an office building, they could do a, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in the PUD that, uh, I guess they could look at, the apartments, um, the family just liked it because they thought that it was sort of a long-term hold.
I mean, I guess sort of a general statement question. I mean, you seem to be coming to us because you're a victim, like many of us are, of the rising property values in Maplewood. And, you know, a lot of us are stuck with a higher tax bill and we don't get abatement. So I can see a lot of constituents asking, you know, why, why should they, you know, get some relief from this when a lot of us are stuck and don't have that relief? So I guess my question for you is, you know, what do you say to that? Like, you know, what's your answer to that?
Well, one, I don't think, uh, I don't, I don't think it'd be similar to say that it's the, that, I don't know if that's a, a, a good comparison just because those people aren't trying to bring, you know, two hundred new people into Maplewood to shop the local shops and go to local restaurants and hopefully work and, and, and bring more activity to Maplewood. So I think that's, that's one differential is Sunning's taking a large amount of risk for what we're trying to show is, uh, not a great return, uh, on land that they've had for a long time. And they're trying to do something nice in Maplewood, all sort of as a, as a partner. Uh, and yeah, I mean, we, the taxes, uh, the cap that's in there now, we didn't think when we first started the development that we'd hit. And we built, uh, sort of bigger and nicer stuff than we projected. And that's why we're here asking is because we're hitting the cap that we didn't expect that we'd hit.
I, so I, and I, I'm, I feel a great sense of responsibility for the decision because of how much of our school funding, schools are funded largely by property taxes. And the, the biggest portion of their funding comes from property tax. And when you combine the amount that, that goes to the MRH school district and also the special schools district, then, um, it's more like eighty percent of the, the tax, property tax goes toward schools, which is our, like, our, our kids and our families that, for, for everybody in the MRH area. Um, so, you know, we, so that's a lot to consider, um...
I think that, I think we're, I think we're on the same page with you on that in that if, if the school board thinks about it long-term, the more that we build, the bigger, nicer stuff that we build, the more taxes that they're gonna be there for them long-term. If we don't build, then there's just a cumulative of less amount of taxes that's gonna go to the school district. But we're, we're on the same page. That's, that's quite frankly why we would talk to the school board first.
So if, I mean, in, in exchange for releasing the cap, are there other thi, like, would you consider set-asides for, um, you set twenty percent of your one-bedroom units at, um, people that make thirty percent of the median family income here?
I don't know, I haven't talked, I'd have to talk to that one.
Or, and I know you can't probably answer right now, but, you know, set or, set-asides for, um, a more affordable subsection of the units is something that some communities consider?
I mean, I'm happy to talk to our client. Right now, I, um, with how tight the returns are, I don't, I, I'd have to, it'd be, it's difficult for me to say now that we even make any return if we did that. So I think I'd have to talk to the client, but I, I get the question.
Yeah, I mean, we, when the apartments were first being leased, um, to get them ramped up, we offered, like, on a fourteen-month lease, we offered the first two months free. Uh, there were incentive programs, uh, for the people that were in there first. Uh, and most likely would happen again for phase two, if that would happen. Uh, so there, there are, there were ways to buy out, uh, the, the monthly rent.
But, but only for a year, right, at, at the, I mean, the next year would go up. So, um, it doesn't do a family a lot of good or, uh, struggling.
Well, and I, I get what you say that, you know, some of the units are maybe eight hundred dollars, but I know when I was looking for my mother-in-law, there wasn't anything like that, you know? It was, everything was far more than she could afford. So I know there's, and, and it's just timing, you know? I'm, I'm not looking for a place for her and, or anyone else, it's looking at the right time.
You said you presented to the school board. Did, did they provide any sort of response as to what their feelings were on this?
Um, I, I think they asked a lot of questions that night, and I think we're waiting on their, I think we're waiting on their response. They didn't seem to oppose it so far. That, that was the feeling we got, but you guys could, like, we hear direction from them.
Are there any other, any other comments or questions?
I would, um, I would look, you know, we'll, we'll look forward to getting spreadsheets with some of the questions about the numbers that we had asked.
And I know a lot of us weren't here the first time around, so we're trying to sort of go back and understand that piece too and kinda put it all together.
Right, and I'm happy to provide, I, uh, council member Phillips was at the...
Yeah.
School board meeting, and I emailed her, I've emailed her three times about, I was trying to meet with her before she left on time because I felt bad because she said she was going to India or something.
Yeah.
So I, um, I'm happy if, if, uh, people want me to send this electronically, I can send this, and send it to her too, I have her email, so.
Sure.
That's, you guys tell me which one we do on that. Yeah, we're glad to take that.
Yeah, yeah, that's great, thank you.
That'd be awesome.
If you want to, you can just send everything to me and I'll make sure they all get it.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, Anthony, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item number fifteen tonight is, uh, something new. Uh, council talked about the, uh, opportunity to address, you know, the, typically the public forum is item number seven. And, uh, that's before everyone has heard, you know, the proceedings of the council meetings. So, uh, uh, at this point, uh, item number fifteen is also a public forum. So if anyone would like to, uh, address council based on, uh, something they didn't talk about earlier or something that we've talked about subsequently, they're welcome to do it that at this point. Is there anyone that would like to, uh, speak to council here? Okay, uh, second public forum is closed. Council communication? Is there any communication? Okay.
I just, I wanna clarify my earlier statements that I have nothing against my mother-in-law. I just don't want her to live with me.
Verifying for the public record, aren't we?
For the public record, that's all I have.
Uh, mayor's report, uh, everyone received, uh, I believe, uh, the draft copy of the solicitation for candidates for the city manager position. Uh, I noticed that there is, uh, some mistakes.
Yeah, I saw one.
Uh, mayor in commission, not mayor in council, and the, the term, the terms were listed, uh...
As four years, and it's really only three.
So if, if you get a chance, would you please look through that and, so we can get those corrections to them? Uh, department heads are also gonna have corrections and clarifications, uh, to be included in that, and I believe that...
Who should we send them to?
Send everything to me, please, and I'll make sure he gets those.
Sounds wonderful.
Thank you, Anthony.
So we, we wanna have the best package that we can, and that, that's it for the mayor's report. City attorney's report?
Nothing to report.
Uh, city managers' report?
Uh, just a few brief things. Um, first all, I will be, um, getting a video clip and sending it to Ray's mother-in-law to let him know. We'll do that right away. Uh, tree inventory's starting this week, or I think it's starting maybe Friday, Thursday, Friday. It'll be going on for about a month, so that's moving forward. Uh, code of ordinances, I believe council member Schmidt, uh, referenced that we need to update our, um, online, um, ordinances. We can update it as often as possible. It doesn't cost anymore because we play by the sheet. So this will be done in about a month. We've sent everything off, we're moving forward with that.
You mean from UniCode?
Correct.
Yep.
I will, uh, I've got a, a running list of things I'm going to pass along to the new city manager, so I'll make sure they know roughly every spring to make sure this is done.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know if anyone saw that news, Channel Four story about the lights on Hanley. I, I just, it was, um, it was erroneous enough that I wanted to make sure you're aware. We never received a complaint. Uh, we looked at all of our records. We had one complaint, um, June of two thousand and fourteen, and that was from Brentwood. They had received a complaint, so city administrator Brentwood sent it to me. We addressed it. We've never had any complaints since. Um, I received a call, I was out of town, everyone knows, at, uh, four thirty-eight that night when the story was run. The public works director of Brentwood, um, received one at four fifty-one. They close at three thirty, their public works department, so as far as, um, they made it look like the city wasn't responding. Number one, we never had a complaint, and we didn't really have opportunity to respond. Um, if you ever notice those lights out, it's THF's responsiveness. We will send them a notice within hours. They had already had an electrical engineer out and they're working on it, so that should be fixed. But I just wanted everyone to know that, the, the background of that story. And if you ever have questions, if you see something like that, please feel free to call me. Um, we sent out a file, Laura Miller sent out a file for the updated citywide survey. We had three firms, or some very, very thick documents, so she had to spend a, 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 we transfer file. So it's not coming from Laura. Uh, most of you have opened it, but please look for something that says we transfer. It's possible it could have been sent to your junk mail. If you have problems, feel free to contact myself or Laura. Um, I, I'm working on the dog park research. I'm, sent it off just in the evening. Mr. Hessel has not had a chance to look at it, but we're gonna look through some options. Other cities are, are trying to keep the council out of it as well. We'll try to do so. Uh, and, um, again, last thing is, uh, please send any comments on that city manager proposal to myself. I'll keep a, a running list so everyone can see what was said, and we can get those off to Mr. Slaven, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Anthony.
Is it possible to get that file transfer, like, on a thumb drive? I know that my computer's locked out of...
Yeah, I have, I actually have, have them in my office. I can give them to you right after if you'd like.
I, I know we tran, I saw it come through from her, and I know from past experience it will not allow it.
One of them, the stack was this big of all-color documents.
For some reason, we can't.
I have them in my office.
So yeah, I can do a thumb drive.
One more question. Um, if I have questions about this, um, uh, development proposal, uh, who should I direct those to?
You can send everything to me, similar, and I'll make sure to send them off to, uh, Mr. Cozad, and we can go ahead and get that done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, is there a, a need to hold a closed session?
No, sir.
Uh, item number twenty-one?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.